Six o'clock, um, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, first things up, we're gonna skip over fin- oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna skip over finance, um, the finance update and go straight to facilities.
Yes.
You get to get out early.
Oh, yeah, I need to get there. I play, spend some time with my boy. Um. I guess, you want me to sit right there?
Stay right there where you are.
Okay, good. Uh, you want an update on?
On, we got the anchor plaza and then security cameras for the athletic complex.
Yes, um, we're gonna meet actually tomorrow or was it Thursday afternoon about anchor plaza?
Okay.
Right now, the anchor is still at, out on the property of Caldwell Stone, but they're okay with it being out there. Looking at what our options are and what are, is budgetary concerned, what, what are we willing to spend on it? So, once we have that, that information, I think we can move forward on plans and know where, knowing how much, what it's gonna look like.
Is it gonna lay down in place?
That would probably be the most cost-effective.
Yes, right, and stable.
The taller it is, the, I mean, if it stand it up, you have to drill it down that far in order to.
Yeah, right, better lay down.
Be more concrete.
Right.
So. So. We don't know, you know, what, what kind of timeline you want.
Has there been a timeline set on, on, on the plaza or anything?
No, it kinda died in the water when it came out, it was gonna be fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So we'll need some donations, maybe.
Well, I do know that the, um, Education Foundation is working on donations for the portion that was considered, uh, the classroom, the outdoor classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, I don't know, I mean, it would've been minimal in comparison to, cause they were selling like plaques for the base of the outdoor classroom area.
Okay.
Um, but, I think, like you said, it just kinda fizzled when the last, uh, amount was shared, so.
Hey, fuck, can I, I think what we're looking at doing is being able to go ahead and get it placed at a minimal cost with the intention that if, at any time that we wanted to go ahead and do the full plan, we can do that. But at least go ahead and let's get it set.
Right, in place.
Yeah.
And build around it.
Correct. Okay, that's, that's the intent of our meeting, I believe, on Thursday, to see if we can get the cost down.
Okay, okay, okay. You gonna meet Thursday coming?
Yes.
What time?
One.
One o'clock.
Did you wanna go to that meeting?
Yeah, I'm sure you're gonna, you're gonna go there, babe. That's the plan, right?
Yes, sir.
What time?
One o'clock.
Okay.
And what, and what was the other one I?
Oh, the security cameras for the athletic complex.
Um, it would take, it would take a little more to work than, I guess we'd have to be able to get it onto our network, is that?
Yeah, right now, we don't have fiber down at the stadium, so all of our cameras are on fiber, so we would have to look at a standalone solution. Maybe lock the, the box into the press box or something and have some cameras, or possibly use some field cameras. Um, so we're just looking into all those options and seeing what we've got to put out there.
Where's the meeting for anchor plaza, over here? Here, okay.
Just, uh, check on my shoe, let me make sure we'll have someone to actually get through it.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay. So we'll skip over staffing and go straight?
Oh, we went there with about, I did, I met with, uh, Ms., uh, Dewey today, and she was very, um, excited and happy with the look of the carpet, so that's good news. And we, uh, yeah.
Only probably looks pretty good to me, I think.
So if you all get a chance to check that out?
Awesome. We'll skip over staffing and go straight to strategic planning.
Y'all ready?
Yeah.
It's so good to be with you all, and, uh, I'm blessed to be here, and you all each have a packet and just, just some information about KEDC where I work now. Uh, just a little bit about me, um, my name is Jim Evans, and I'm from Lee County, Bayonne, Kentucky. I served there as superintendent, a little over eleven years, and two thousand nineteen, I decided to take a leap in April and decided it was time to look to do something else, but, uh, love the work that I did there. Loved working in our district for right at twelve years. Um, started in that district in the early nineties as a teacher's aide and a bus driver. So, uh, that's where I began my career path, substitute teaching first, then the only job available in Lee County at the time was a teacher's aide position. I told the superintendent Glenn Wilson, I said, "I'll take anything you have because I want to work in the system." So, Mr. Wilson said, "Oh, I've got some aides job working with some special needs kids," and I said, "I, I'll take it." So jumped in on that position and, uh, shortly thereafter, fell in love with it. Uh, my degrees actually were in history and anthropology teaching, so, uh, uh, decided that at that time, uh, after working with those kids for a year, went back to Mr. Wilson and said, "What job do you have?" He said, "I have nothing but an emergency certified teaching job the next year." So, ended up going back while I was teaching to EKU and got a fifth year in special education. Uh, stayed in that role six, seven years, loved those children and still do. Uh, ended up being assistant principal at the high school there, ninety-eight to two thousand. Was in Danville a bunch, when I, I was coaching, uh, coached girls' basketball for right in eight years, boys and girls tennis for eight years while I was teaching, an assistant principal. So I was in Danville a bunch, uh, ended up being high school principal from two thousand, two thousand seven in transportation, and oh-seven and oh-eight, was blessed to become superintendent in Lee County, so stayed in that role in two thousand nineteen. So, uh, just tell you that, just cause I've had a lot of jobs and a lot of experience in schools and districts, and, uh, have worked hard in every role that I've had. But, uh, now I work at KEDC, and which you all remember, which is the Kentucky Educational Development Corporation. We're so blessed to have you all be part of our work. So this is a service that we provide. I facilitate strategic planning, uh, in our member school districts at no cost to you all. So if you all decide this is a service that you want me to help facilitate, I'm, I'll be more than honored to help you. Uh, so, been blessed to work with Dr. Ross, I do some also some work with KASA, uh, and also I'm a school board KSBA trainer, I do roll the super, roll the board member, and also superintendent evaluation training for boards. Uh, so I've got my hands on a lot of things, but I love what we do at KEDC, so, and specifically outside of strategic planning, I work with, uh, our projects, operations, and grants teams, and we have ten grants right now, which I would love to get you all, some of your teachers involved with some of our grant work. But anyway, I'm here to talk about strategic planning and, uh, still live in Vable. I drive to Lexington every day, about an hour and ten or fifteen minutes. Uh, but let's talk about strategic planning, but let's make this really informal. If you all have questions, comments, or anything as we walk through the process, please just stop me and say, "Hey, Jim," or "Jimmy," or whatever you wanna call me, I, I, I'll just answer to anything. Uh, we can answer your questions and see how best we can fit Danville Independent Schools' needs. And, uh, I facilitated this process in three, four districts, uh, the last districts I worked with, I worked simultaneously with Garrett County and Rock Castle on alternate nights, I was going to one district one night and one the other, so that worked out really well. But anyway, we can start, and I guess you've got the clicker, so I'll just give an introduction to who I am, and tonight we'll just do an overview of strategic planning and the process, so, uh, go ahead and. So if you think about strategic planning, why do you do it? Why do you want to come together? I don't, I'm not sure if you have a current plan in place, if you do, that's okay, because one of the steps that we'll take, we'll, we'll look at your current vision, mission, and things like that, but strategic planning does provide a focus, formalizing your district beliefs, vision, mission, parameters, objectives, your strategies, and, and will formalize an action plan for you all. It's a way to engage your community and stakeholders, both internal and external, for feedback. So that's one of the decisions you all will make, if you want to be a part of your stakeholder team. It does help create efficiency and will save money, increase processes and practices in your district. It will help you identify gaps, once we get started this, this process, so. What is strategic planning? It's the means by which the community or organization continuously recreates systems and itself toward an extraordinary purpose. So, I put my heart and soul in what I do at KEDC, that's what I do as superintendent, and I do it in this work, because this work can be life-changing for your school district. Uh, and it should be, because strategic planning is, is a great process, but it's not worth a nickel if you don't follow through and implement after you do the work. So I, you'll hear me say that throughout the process, monitor after we get finished and get through the process, but it's a concentration of all your efforts, resources, and activities and energies toward, I've got a single goal, but you'll have your mission, vision, but you'll have multiple goals that you'll identify. The planning vocabulary, this is basically the process from start to finish. Uh, we will identify and work through each of these in, in different se- uh, sessions, exploring how you all want to do that. It can be a two-hour session, hour and a half, whatever you all decide, but we will look at your values, we'll talk about beliefs, your vision, mission, what are the parameters in your district that you all really want to, what will you do, what won't you do? We'll do an internal analysis, an external, that will be each department inside your district, you'll have finance, instruction. I mean, every department, you have technology, we'll do an internal analysis in front of the stakeholder group, uh, that strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. From this work, we'll develop your objectives and strategies, action, planning, implementation, communication, again, monitoring, 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 and accountability of the plan, so. Roles and responsibilities, now, as board members, your role is to govern the system. You have these people to do the work for you, but your role is to govern the system. You all have to approve this moving forward with the strategic plan, and you would have to approve the strategic plan once it gets to a point of looking at finalization. But again, governance by you requires a broad systemic view of the district with a clear focus on how to achieve the strategic outcome set. And I know you as board members, you have that, so, uh, and that is your role as a board member, governance. The role of the superintendent and staff is to administer and concentrate on the steps necessary to accomplish the strategic plan. Just like you heard a report here about the daily, uh, job responsibilities and outcomes in your district, that's their role. Your role is, is to hold people accountable, superintendent, and, uh, let them, you all, uh, govern the, the district. So developing incentive meeting norms, the first meeting, uh, we had with the stakeholder group, we would basically come together, I will do this not-so-formal presentation with that group, but we'll develop meeting norms. So meeting norms are the standards you set for working together, uh, possibly in product, product, to productively as a group, and they should be a guideline for behavior. Each meeting, we will talk about our meeting norms, and we will decide those as a group, you will, I'll just help facilitate that. Um, again, how we will function as a team, and they will need to be agreed upon, by having questions. Cause I can talk really fast, and I don't wanna go too fast because this is a lot of information. Some examples of meeting norms, we'll respect everyone's time while starting and ending on time, having one conversation at a time, use a law of two feet, cell phone silence, so those are, those are the things your stakeholder committee will come up with and agree upon as meeting norms for strategic planning. Development of belief statements and value words, uh, these are your formal expression of the organization's fundamental values, your ethical code, its overriding convictions. Your beliefs will provide the value system on which the subsequent portions of the plan we developed and evaluated. These will be discussed, everybody will have an opportunity to share what they think beliefs and values are from their perspective, and how they want, what they want Danville Independent Schools to look like. So beliefs will become part of your published plan. At the end, you will have a published plan that I'll help put together, and I think you're gonna be kind of the person that might be in, in the, um, part of this, so we'll work hand in hand, but you all will be included in all this as we move through the work, so you all will know what's going on. Here's some belief examples, uh, these are actually, actual beliefs from school districts, so I won't read them all to you, but I will read a, a couple. Uh, we believe student achievement is a shared responsibility between homeschool and the community. We believe students should understand the importance of hard work in achieving their goals, persevering through cha-challenges, and maintaining positive outlooks. So just a couple of examples, and I'll provide these as, as we work through each session. You all will have examples of actual belief statements, you'll have time to talk, discuss, and then you all will actually create your own. Value words, same way, uh, respect, honesty, teamwork, character integrity, transparency, and data-driven. We will talk about what those are, the definition of what that would look like, and what, again, what you all as Danville Independent Schools, what your value words are, and what you want to, you know, add for your district. The development of the vision statement, and, uh, this is a, I'm not sure what your vision is, uh, off the top of my head, I don't know. And then, but I will research and look and be ready to talk about that, but it's, it's, uh, your vision is your dream, what you want your district to be. It's what your organization believes, or your ideal conditions for your community, for your community, and again, I heard you talk about a foundation, I know that means you got to have lots of community support. That's one thing I do know about Danville, you all seem like you've got a tight-knit community here, which is, that's awesome, I love that. You need that, you need that support, so, but again, how things will look at the issue, if the issue important to you are completely perfectly addressed. Certain characteristics that most vision statements have in common should be understood and shared by members of the community. You'll hear me talk about communication, communication, communication of the plan, of the vision, vision statement, and the mission. Broad enough to include a diverse variety of local perspectives, so everybody will have input in this, so, and there's lots of ways to get to that. Uh, some districts like to, uh, create a vision statement and then share those examples out with staff, let staff have input on that, let staff vote. Uh, others do it with their stakeholder groups, so there's lots of ways, and we'll work through each of these, so. Again, you want it to be inspiring and uplifting to everyone involving your effort, easy to communicate, and short enough to fit on a T-shirt, I think something that's quick and easy for people to recall and remember, and you wanna be known by that. I know Rock Castle, uh, they've got a, uh, their vision statement is short enough that Carrie has hashtagged it. So when she tweets, she hashtags it, so it's, uh, Rocket, it's Rocket Larnish, her Rocket Leaders, it's her vision statement. It's something that quick, we had forty people working on that, and that's what they came up with, so Garrett County had something very similar. Vision examples, uh, these are actually vision statements, uh, "We personalize learning today to empower every student throughout tomorrow." We're all learners working to reach your full potential through individuals, goals, and pace with flexible time and space, so. Here's more, "The leader in learning, learners to leaders," this is, uh, Garrett County gifted community, uh, gifted committed staff growing confidence in students. That's their vision statement, so. Development of mission, uh, "Clear concise expression of the district's identity, purpose, and means written in one statement, keystone upon which the plan is, is." So serves to focus all the organization's attention and to concentrate all its energies on a common purpose. We'll develop a mission statement, so, a-actual, uh, mission statements. I, this one, uh, "The mission of the school district is to partner with district schools, families, students, business, and industry communities to provide leadership and support and ensure success for each and every child." This was mine in Lee County, "The mission of the school district is to foster trust growth and accountability and partnership with students, staff, parents, and the community." I'll tell you why that was developed like it was, because when I took the role as superintendent, I'm just, I'll just be honest, if you all are part of this work, as we go through, I'll tell you a million, million stories from experience. Uh, we had a lack of trust in our district, so that was something we concentrated on, we went through the strategic planning process, was how to, uh, force solicit voice, we wanted to hear what our stakeholders had to say. There was a lack, definite lack of trust, so there was a lack of trust with staff, there's a lack of trust with community members, so it was important that we brought those people to the table, had a discussion, but fostering trust was a critical piece for us in Lee County Schools at that juncture, so, but again, we wanted to be accountable, we wanted to grow, but it was a partnership with students, staff, parents, and the community. So that was ours, I include that, I think it's been changed, I think they did some, they had a strategic planning, I think, maybe the year before last or something, and did a, came up with a different mission, and that's okay, so things are ever-changing. So here are some, some very long ones, but, uh, you can go on to the next slide. So parameters, uh, strategic parameters are boundaries in which the organization places upon itself for good reason, so are boundaries in which your organization will operate, so parameters could be board policy. You may have legal policies in your, in your KSBA policies that you are held to, that you have to do, you don't have an option because the legislature, they mandate, and you get this update from KSBA, excessive legal, there you go. You have to adopt those, you can, you know, make some changes, but again, things we will never do are things we will always do. Examples, uh, "We will not tolerate any action or circumstances that degrade any person. We'll develop educational programs and support services in response to community student needs, will not accept failure." So, those are just, uh, examples. Any questions? Everybody do it, okay, all right. So internal analysis, again, this is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Uh, it's an unbiased examination of the organization specifically, uh, and the organizational charters that reflects function, decision-making, and information flow. So when we get to this point, your department leads will share out, and I know in a small district, you have people wearing multiple hats, so I understand that a hundred percent, um, but we will be looking at data. So we'll look at strengths, and we'll chart all this out, we'll use lots of chart paper, and, uh, we'll chart this out, but we'll also have somebody capturing this in a Google, in a Google Drive, so that we can keep track and, uh, you know, and follow up the work as we go. So strengths found in the data, what are weaknesses, and there'll be some hard conversations that come up, but we respect everybody's opinion and value, everybody's input. Uh, when you do strategic planning, it's about getting better, so there will be things that come to the table that, you know, that may be some things that need to be discussed or uncomfortable things, but always keep the best interest of your district in mind, and what's best for your kids, and what's best for your community. Opportunities for improvement, uh, we'll see that through the data. Threats, that, you know, what could be out there that could be threatening Danville Independent Schools? That could be enrollment, it could be your tax rate, it could be, uh, well, there's lots of different things that we could talk about. You know, mandates from, unfunded mandates from the legislature, so there's lots of things that could be talked about here. Internal analysis, again, um, these are just definitions of just what I said, strengths, what they are, weaknesses, and what they are, and with the stakeholder group, we'll go into, into detail about each of these before we actually roll into it, so. Just some sample questions that we would use, uh, what does the data tell us? Again, we wanna know, uh, what the data says, and what, and then again, what does the data not tell us? What are some things that we don't see in the data that maybe we know, or maybe we've observed, we've observed? So what are causes for celebration? And I'm gonna tell you all, you all need to celebrate as much as you can, cause there's so many negatives out there right now about everything you do. So too much pressure on the negative, celebrate the good things, if the smallest things need to be celebrated. So I, I promise you, you all celebrate, showcase what you're doing, you all have done great work here, so, um, it's, uh, celebrate, I, I, you know, we wanna showcase you. So, and what are opportunities for improvement? That's what this process is about, is continuous improvement, so, um, I went through strategic planning in Lee County in the twelve years there, three times. So in LA, when I took the job, uh, just much like Dr. Ross, I wanted to see where we were in the district, I knew we had some issues we had to work through, so it was time to bring the family around the table, and involve multiple stakeholders and get input, and before we could move forward. So, um, what are the opportunities for improvement? What are we gonna do to continually improve, and that's ongoing, that is ongoing, it doesn't stop. You're always looking for a way to get better because your demographics are, are changing. So if you don't change with your demographics, your, your, your district's gonna get left behind, so that's something to keep in mind when you go through this process. So, and again, what might our next steps be? So, who's gonna talk in internal analysis? We'll have the instruction, we'll have a report on assessment, curriculum, special education, your professional development, your finance, where you are budget-wise, facilities, all these things, we'll talk about these and identify, and they will share out and talk about, we've probably, all these, that's a whole lot, but we'll identify, uh, those with the most need and have everybody share, because here's what happens a lot of times. In a small district, you have lots of people doing lots of different things, but they don't get a lot of time to talk. So sometimes people don't really know who's responsible for what, and being this way, you'll identify gaps. Say, "Well, I didn't know you did that," or "I didn't know you were responsible for that," but it's also just a good way for you as a board to know what's going on in the district, so, and I know you do, I know that you are, are well-versed and well-schooled in what happens here. So that's just who will report out on the internal analysis. Um, strengths, here are some examples that will come out, you know, child development staff, excellent physical managers, so community support, and we'll chart all these out, all this work will be charted on chart paper. Opportunities for improvement, unclear accountability responsibility, accountability at all levels, not enough qualified substitute teachers, not enough qualified full-time teachers, so those are probably two things right now that are, uh, in any district we would talk about, probably, uh, with staffing and, and substitutes, but. External analysis, so again, strength, weaknesses, opportunity, and threats, but you think about the strategic planning, you have to think about today, present, but you need to be thinking, what are, what's gonna happen two, three years, five years down the road? What's our enrollment gonna look like? What is the projection, right now, what are our numbers in kindergarten? What's that projection gonna look like, uh, in five years from now? So those are external things, is business and industry in the community, are they moving in, are they moving out? Is your enrollment increasing? So there's lots of different factors, do you have lots of unfunded mandates? Do, are you, uh, just giving you some examples here, are you overstaffed? If you are, if you're spending more than you're bringing in on revenue and expenditures, that's a problem, so those things will come out, but competition, are there other organizations that could be pulling students from, from here? Um, what are the critical issues? And again, this will focus attention on the paramount threats and opportunities, and again, this will be specific to you all. And again, I, you all would need to look at that from locally, state level, and absolutely national level, because all those things impact you directly, uh, whether it's right here or not, what happens at the federal level, the federal dollars and things like that, that trickles down, so it, it all impacts you, you gotta stay on top of it. Again, I just said that, education trends, local, state, and national, again, your child health, welfare, um, technology analysis, I know you're talking about fiber, uh, in Lee County, we still don't have internet in our community, which I fought for that for ten years. We've got kids that live places that, that don't have internet, so that's a shame. But any broadband internet access in the community, and again, your population trends, we're moving up and down, those are just things to keep your finger on the pulse. Those are the things we'll talk about. And then from that work, after the SWOT analysis, stakeholders will vote, and you all will identify your top needs, and, uh, you can do that multiple ways, you, I call them pillars, you can have a pillar of instruction or technology, or it could be facilities, but there's other, other things that we can use, I'm just throwing some things out there, but we will develop, you know, your objectives, they're tied back to your mission, uh, you'll, you know, they can be able to student achievement, they should, student performance or other, you know, three or four objectives per goal, uh, here's just some examples, you know, we graduate a hundred percent of students, we have a hundred percent of our students achieving, get established, achievement, but these will be specific to you all. So these will be specific to you all, based upon what your data says and where you all feel like you need to go. How we're gonna do it, strategies, our bold commitments to deploy the organization's resources toward the stated objectives. You all need to think about budgeting as we walk, walk through this, because of work through strategic planning, because there'll be some things you put in here that's gonna require some funding, so, you know, but that'll, we'll talk about that as we go. Here are some examples, and each session, um, that we work through, I provide examples, we'll create the agenda, push out the email. Uh, week before, a few days before, we have each session, so you all will know what's coming, what we did the last time. Uh, and, you know, I'll keep you in the loop about everything happening, so. Strategies examples, we'll develop and support an comprehensive employee wellness program, and these are actual, actual, uh, strategies that have been put in place, we'll develop a teacher mentor master teacher program, uh, probably a national award certified or something, I'm just kidding. I worked with Suzanne a long time ago, and you all got a great, 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 great team here, I'll just tell you. I met with Vaughn and Brian, Dr. Ross, a couple times, and they're phenomenal. So, and then she was on the last meeting, and I know she was principal here, but we worked together when she was really working on some national award uh, things, and did an outstanding job, and she still is, so you all got a great, great team, I will tell you that. Um, just some examples, again, we'll develop, I'm ready to have a teacher ma- mentor master teacher program, organize strategically to accomplish our mission, so. organize strategically to accomplish our mission, so. Then your action plan, that's where, you know, it really, like I was talking about earlier. You know, we'll put all this in a formalized plan, but the action plan is detailed description of the specific actions required to achieve. You know, the results necessary for the implementation of the strategies. Strategies become operational. Action plans are written with operational form and use, so we will work through that. Anybody have any questions? Oh, oh. So a whole lot of information. Basically, this is the, this is the slide I probably could've talked from, but I just wanted to share with you. Each slide and each piece, the vocabulary, that would be a session or a combined session of, of strategic planning. Of course, we'd start with that overview of the process, develop your norms. And then we'd go right into values, beliefs, vision, mission and then, you know, start from there. But this is a process, values, beliefs, parameters, the, vision, mission, internal, external analysis and competition. Your objectives, the what, strategies, how you're gonna do it, your action plan, of course. Monitor it and hold people accountable. That's, that's the biggest part of any plan that you got. If you've got plan and no owner, then nobody will get it done because nobody knows who's, who owns it. But, um, I, any questions at all? That's fast and I know, I didn't mean to go so fast, but I don't want to hold you all up either. Cause that's a ton of information. So, and what questions do y'all have or do y'all have any questions?
When does this start?
Well, that's, we need, once, the, the first thing is you all as a board need to decide if this is, if you all are ready to move and with it and get it going.
Okay.
If you are, then you all could make a motion tonight and say, we're ready to roll. Or if you all have discussion here with your team, if you all feel like, and then I can start it as soon as we get number. The next thing that will have to happen is you all need to decide on your stakeholder group and who are, who are one of your participants.
That's one of those.
Yes, and then, uh, how you identify your participants. And, you know, you don't want the team, the stakeholder group to be so big where you can't get anything accomplished. You get 40 people together and it's hard to get people to come to an agreement on value words. And in Johnson County, I had 50 people and I, they could not agree on belief state, on beliefs. And it was value words, they couldn't. I love Tom Cockrum, but, and then Corona hit and then, uh, we had to shut it down right in the middle and he never started it back. So, but now Rock Castle had a, hmm, probably over 20 or 30, Garrett County about the same. But you don't have to have that many. You can have a smaller committee of that and you can communicate the information out as the best you like. And I will communicate with you all as your outside facilitator, uh, with an email that has everything in it. And as long as we got that Google shared drive, uh, that will, you know, and listen, I'm not a researcher. I'm not an expert on strategic planning. I am a practitioner. Uh, went through it as a high school principal, uh, with our district and then went through it three times and used Bill Cook's model, it's strategic planning for America's schools. But also in 2017, worked with student group. So some of their work is built into what I do, the pillar work and things like that. So, uh, there's a couple of models that are kind of synced there. But this is more Bill Cook than anything. And, um, but it's good work and it's been utilized in districts across the United States. But again, I'm not coming to you as a researcher. I promise you, I, I don't have that background, but as just as a practitioner. Dr. Ross?
I think it's also important for the board to remember that, you know, we have to think about what role you all wanna play as a board.
That's right.
Uh, you know, uh, remember anytime we have three or more, it's a quorum.
That's right.
So, so everybody being on it is really not productive, you know? Not productive, it's, it's just very time-heavy, if we get that way.
Okay.
Uh, you, you know, it's, it's a lot of ways we could look at it from having a person rotate each time.
Yeah.
Or taking the focus, like if we're talking about vision and mission and maybe one or two people wanna be a part of that work or, or. So we just have to think about as a board, how you all wanna be a part of that process.
Absolutely. And he's right. If you all have more than two, you gotta call a special board meeting every time we have strategic planning. Rock Castle did that. Um, Garrett County did not. Garrett County had two people. Morgan County had all five board members, uh, it was a special pop board meeting every time. But everybody does it different. And like you all need to decide what's best for you, but you do have to think about that. Maybe the meeting of three, you have a, all your special board meeting is state legal and it's an official board meeting, so.
Where, where did you use your timeline for this process?
Uh, it went forever in Rock Castle and Garrett County, but we can probably get through it in, in probably four weeks, five weeks. If we do a session every week, you know, and kind of space of that, maybe every other week and try to, you know, it's according to how, how long you all wanna meet. Uh, in Rock Castle, we had a set time and started at six o'clock and we ended it, no, we started at five and ended at six thirty. Garrett County was earlier in the day. They wanted to start like at four o'clock and go up to six o'clock. So, uh, Morgan County was a six o'clock start and going on till, they wanted to go until as far as we could go. But that's not conducive if we get to a point where, you know, over 90 minutes or two hours, people are worn out and there's lots of.
Kind of productive.
Yes, it's not. And then, uh, you know, so, but I'll stay and do whatever you all wanna do. Again, it's, uh, I don't, I'll stay as long as you wanna stay and do the work. But, you know, 90 minutes or two hours, uh, is probably long enough to have a, have a, have a session. And then have some time in between to absorb and think about and then for me to get back, you know, information pushed back out for the next week and go, you know, get it back to you or the week after, but.
One of the coolest ways I've, I've seen it done. I've been a part of a, a school district that didn't do it as well, but I was part of a college that did it. And they said, I think it was six sessions and an agenda each session with time blocks for each portion of it. But it was, you know, the work was done, you know, efficiently. Uh, I'm not saying that it was superior, but it was, it was, it was very consistent. Everyone knew the expectation and went in with a purpose. And it also allowed people to, to work beforehand and come in kind of thinking, okay, what do I think of our current mission? And really Johnson notes down, so.
And that's what I will give you all prior to. You all will have an email from me that says, this week we're gonna be doing this. Here's the definition of that. Here's some samples you all be thinking about prior to when we come together. So, um, that's, that's part of the work I'll be doing behind the scenes. If you all decide you wanna utilize me and I will be a good fit. Um, I wanna be a good fit for you all. So, but I'll commit to you all. I'll give you everything I've got, I promise you that. So, uh, if I'm a good fit for you, you know, I'll, I'll commit to everything I can do to help your school district, so.
Do we currently have a strategic plan?
We do. It, it, uh, it sunsets in 2023. So that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And another thing is it was very program-heavy and it has a lot of programs that we don't even use anymore.
Okay. So with the new strategic plan, what's the, generally, how long do they, are they in place? Is it three years, five years?
I would recommend like three years to five years out. Of course, you wanna think of those long-term things, but three, three years, you know, and then, but you need, that's why you can't. I recommend that you all, once you get this plan developed and you start implementing, that you all talk about it at your board meetings. You all need to put a line item on and just talk about strategic planning at a board meeting and say, where are you at? Have, have a group report out, just, you know, that's important because if it's not talked about and it's not important, it's gonna go on a shelf because I promise you all distractions will happen in the school district and it'll get away from you and next thing you know, it's been a year and you've not looked at it. So it's critical that you, that you look at it. And I, I say that with all sincerity. I'm, I want this to be what's gonna help you all.
The current is 2019 to 2023.
Okay. I'm a huge supporter of strategic plan and I, yeah, yes, we need one. My only concern is that we have someone who is dedicated to making sure we are following through. If it is that the board is, that all of us are the ones who are the keepers of the strategic plan or if there's someone already on staff who is the point person to say, hey, let's make sure we are following the strategic plan.
Well, I think we're pretty lucky that, um, uh, to have someone that has got strategic planning background.
Yeah.
Uh, but in the same sense, I agree wholeheartedly. We need to set almost like a, uh, a timeline trajectory of checking in with the plan to make sure it's effective.
Yeah.
One other question, any other places that you set this up? Was the community involved?
Yeah, they have some communities.
Like a city commissioner or even the Spies Old or, I'm not a baroque club, alliance club, something like that?
Yeah. They weren't community-heavy. They didn't have like an over, that, it was, it was mostly school staff. And then they had a parent representative and they had teacher reps. Then they had a couple of members from the community, but it wasn't, you know, Garrett County had, uh, someone from, uh, Lindsay Wilson College as their community member. And then, uh, Carrie had people like what Dr. Ross said. She maybe had a representative come to one session and kind of listen in, but they weren't in every session. So they kind of rotated in and out, community members that could be there. So, um, but if you've got partners, if you've got education partners that are involved in your work, if you've got partnerships with a community college or something like that, that's also your community partner. So you could think about that. Um, you know, who you would like, you, you know, you want those, you wanna hear, you wanna hear some, some voices from the external side because business and industry will have a different look at what, as us as educators and board members have of what school looks like or needs to be. So I think you do need to have, again, I wouldn't have it so heavy that, you know, you need to listen, you need to have your staff involved, you know, as well. But you've got a great central office group here right now that can take it and run with it, so.
Big letters. And the other thing I think would be important for somebody from South College to be on it. I mean, other than yourself, you know, you're saying, cause they are involved in community. And we do actually score on this, so I think South College need to be a part of it.
BCTC.
And yeah, BCTC, yeah. Yeah, yeah, damn.
I had a, a question. With bringing in, um, external partners, have other districts used some type of incentive to, for folks to be engaged and be committed to the work for, this is intense work, right? For five weeks, six weeks or whatever it is? I'm thinking of parents who we want, we, we need to hear their voice. It's a lot of their time that we're asking of them. Um, have other boards done anything to?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I just invited them as a.
A good meal?
So he has, you can have that, that's right.
Free childcare or, you know?
Nobody has done that. Everybody, you know, uh, Garrett County, they were not heavy on, on parents. Uh, uh, Rock Castle did have some parents, Morgan County had zero. So they didn't have any parents involved. But I do think you need some parent representatives to come in, you know, because they have a different perspective as well. You need to provide them that voice to say, you know, I have concerns here, this is going great or whatever.
As many parents we have getting on, getting on social media, making comments. We, we, let them get in the pit with us.
I agree. Y'all, social media, it's, it's just hard. It's a battle every day, every day.
Yes.
So, uh, it's just constant. That's why I say celebrate what you can, push to celebrate, celebrate every time you can get an opportunity. Um, celebrate kids, your staff, you all, I mean, y'all need to celebrate because there's too much negative out there and there's too much good work going on that we're not getting to see, so.
Is this something you need to put on tonight?
What about SBDM members?
You can have SBDM reps if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be.
What were your negative, new challenges you had in place?
Yes, sure. They should be involved.
Everybody's on an interest. Districts have, districts have invited or then they let the SBDM pick what representative they want to send to be a part. Just to their, yeah, their side, they can.
Yes, right, right, yeah.
So they, they pick and said, you know, I'd like this rep to come. That's fine, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, Dr. Ross, right now, um, we just need to make a motion to proceed with, with strategic planning. And from there, we can go into all the details for like the next meeting or is that something that we can discuss together?
Yes, uh, yes. Cause, yeah, we're, we're, if we know we're committed to move forward, especially with Dr. Evans, I think it'd be good for us to do so.
Okay. Someone wanna make a motion to proceed?
Make a motion and we proceed with, um, Dr. Evans and KEDC for our strategic planning.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Next steps will be, um, next steps, I'll be getting back with your, your district team. And then we will start working on a stakeholder group and then of course, y'all will be part of that. And I've got a, an email that I will pass to everyone who's gonna start pushing that out. And it'll be a formal invite that you all, you're gonna be the contact person. We'll send out and invite individuals to start getting going and then we'll look at dates and get them on the counter and get rolling. So, but I'll.
I think all of us need to look at some people in the community.
Yeah.
BCTC, South College.
Right.
Uh, and like, look at churches. Somebody, little churches like you wanna be involved in this too.
Right.
Are these open meetings?
Yeah. If you're, if you got, if you, if you have your more than three, you know, of course, you would have a, it'd be a special board meeting, but if you keep it at two.
I'm talking about.
Public to come in.
No?
Uh, I mean, you can advertise it and say, you know, we're having strategic planning, but I wouldn't say it's open to the public because that's, that's, you could get into a. Yeah, I just don't think it should be a public meeting, you know? It's a, you're doing strategic planning. If somebody asks to attend, you know, I would wanna know the intent. I was in that super dinner room for almost 12 years. I know sometimes you have an open meeting like that around strategic planning and it can become a gripe session and, and turn ugly and lots of, lots of things, so. But no, it doesn't have to be an open, it can be an internal. But if we have a board meeting, special call, then that would justify an open meeting and anybody can come, so. And again, I'm not against that either. We did that at, uh, Rock Castle every meeting and Morgan County, every meeting was a special board meeting, so.
Perhaps at some phases, it may serve it well to have it as an open meeting. You know, maybe not in the beginning, but as we.
Right. And the thing about it is, uh, you can communicate as you move forward what's happening. Each step of the process, you all can communicate it out or I can, I don't care to help with that. And we'll help facilitate that, can communicate steps that you're taking. And I think it would be good to let your staff know and community know that you're going through the process. Here's where we're at, here's what we're doing and things like that. Keep them in, in the loop at least and, you know, communicate what's going on. Um, that way they have a part. They may not be directly involved in it, but, you know, you can think about, also, if you wanna survey your staff. I mean, I've got a, kind of a generic survey, uh, that I've used. And then, but if you survey, here's something I'll tell you, you need to share the results, what you get because you don't wanna do a survey and then kind of not even look at it and us look at it as strategic planning and nobody never really know what's in it. So y'all got time to think about that. Those are things we can talk about internally and decide how you wanna move forward. But I'm here to help. I promise you, I'm here to help in any way and support your district and support, you know, you all. You know, I'm.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Well, thank you all and I'm committed to kids and your district and anything I can do to help, I promise. So, well, if y'all have anything, he's got my number, they've got my number, everybody's got my number. I'll be seeing y'all soon and I don't have to leave County, that's okay.
Don't get a speeding ticket.
I try not to. I'll stop, stop getting a cup of coffee somewhere, but thank you all so much. And again, I'm blessed to be able to work and Dr. Ross, thank you for asking. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Yes, and I know you all, y'all are doing good work here, so hopefully I can help in some capacity for y'all to keep moving.
That's great.
So, alright, alright, y'all.
Well, we were talking about timelines. Um, we were talking about.
Thank you.
A board, like powwow, by the end of July, July, August. Do you think we could maybe work that into the timeline and have this presentation as like fun, that powwow?
Let's not call it that, love. What would you want to call it?
Gathering.
A gathering, okay.
A retreat.
Do it in room three.
We can call it whatever you want. We should call it strategic planning. Okay. Um, the next thing on the agenda, SRO positions.
So talking about unfunded government mandates, uh, SROs, you know, requirement is one per campus. Um, so by definition, if we're looking at Anchor Academy and Dable High School, this sets as one campus. And they're continuing. I, I don't know what the exact word is now, if it's state highway or whatever it is that separates two buildings, but this counts as one given. So currently we have two SROs, mainly houses.
Why would SRO, sorry?
Oh, okay. School Resource Office.
Okay.
Yeah. That's important to know because we do have a lot of acronyms that we don't always explain. Um, so we currently have two. Uh, they share time between the two elementary schools, but obviously Ray currently is at the high school. but Officer Ray currently is at the high school. And you've seen this picture recently. He, he just got the comfort dog as well. And then we have Officer Shirley at Bates Mill School. And she's, she shares her time at, at Hogshead and Officer Ray with Tolliver. But they spend the, the most of their time at those other locations. I, I think Officer Shirley, she can speak to it more than I can. Tries to do, she's pretty good about trying to visit.
She tries to, she mostly comes by Hogshead first thing in the morning before they start their day of eight and greets kids in the morning. And sometimes she'll try to swing back once in a while during lunchtime or something. But usually she's just going to very start of the day before they start. She gets caught at eight. But she's always available and she's wonderful.
So in talking with Assistant Chief Dome, he's kind of taken, taken over this for the Dable Police Department, this School Resource Officer. They're, they're sitting, you know, they're currently assisting other schools in our district, VCA and as well as KSD. And, and he approached me saying that they currently, I guess there's this retirement to SRO program. And he's more than glad to come and, and talk to you all. Go and know more information about it next week. But he has informed me that they currently have two additional officers ready to go that are retired officers. And when I say retired officers, I'm, I'm thinking officers that are just were high caliber officers. They were pushed out the door. These people retired. But they still have, they still a lot in the tank.
I'm glad you qualified that.
Yes. They, they, they still have a lot in the tank and they want to give back to their community. And so what he informed me was that he would be able, if we were willing to be able to take that condition on, that we would get one at the current rate that were being charged for the other two. And the fourth one would be at hat price. So to give you numbers, just to kind of think about, we currently budget with the, with their last raise, because the city commission did do a substantial raise for them. We budget about thirty-five thousand dollars per officer.
For a year?
Yes. Yeah. Now, not all of them meet that, but that's the number that we kind of started with is thirty-five thousand. Approximately forty-two thousand of the seventy that we're currently uncovering comes out of our, I mean, paid for out of our safe schools money, which is, is money that's allocated from, I guess it's Kentucky Center of Safe Schools. And there's a, there's a flat rate that every school district gets no matter what, and then it's based on student count. So that's, that's our number around that now. So that means we're currently at about twenty-eight thousand dollars for the, for the two that we currently have. And so that would, we're looking at adding an additional fifty-two thousand dollars, five hundred, you know, fifty-two thousand, five hundred for that, to be able to have an SRO in each of the buildings. So I'm just kind of providing information. If you, if you have questions for me, I can try to do some research. We can have Chief Dome come by next week to ask more specific questions. I mean, he's even said, look, if your board's interested in going ahead and, and moving forward with it and there's money available, we're willing to go ahead and put them in, in your buildings to finish the school year. I'll give them. That's how ready they are. They're committed to the program.
With the regulation, like when does it begin?
Well.
Past year.
Yes. So on to your point, yes. I actually had to sign for the district a waiver, to get a waiver from Kentucky, you know, from, I don't know how it gets to the Kentucky Center of Safe Schools and who they reported to, but they didn't collect waivers. And our waiver was approved this past year. I'm.
I mean, I have a plan of fifty-seven thousand toward this. Yeah. With the recent events in school, I mean, it's a, it's a no-brainer for me. Yes, do all that we possibly can to keep kids safe.
I'd rather be safe than be sorry.
So if you think of any questions during the week that you, yes.
Other levels of SROs, as far as pay goes?
I would have to get specific. Now, like our current two, they're actually on the force. Yes, there's, it would be based on their, their time in service, yeah, with their rank.
But if they're retired, it could be different.
That, and that's why, that's why I need Chief Dome to speak to that. I have a feeling it has something to do with this retirement to SRO program. This, it probably, it has a cap, I'm sure. That's what I think.
And being that this is in the state retirement system, I'm sure they have the same one eighty-day requirement, things like that. But I don't know if it'd be a fact of this.
Yes, I think you're, he did speak to something like that because they're in retirement. They would actually only be contracted to Dable Police Department during our school year. And, and they would still be a part of that hundred eighty-day like our other classified staff are. So they could be a part of the planning days and opening and closing day. But where the other two, they're full-time. As soon as they're, they're out of school, they're back to, they're, they're, they're back to doing the normal.
Right, right. They're back into a regular rotation.
Correct.
So if we had camp or something, the SRO, the SRO would not, so it would be a part of that unless we had them separately for it?
You said like a, like a summer camp or something? Well, what I, what I've seen in the past, like Officer Ray, he may be doing his normal, you know, his normal thing that he does. But if he knows there's something going on and his, his request, he's going to make an appearance during his normal duty day. Yeah. You know, and I don't know if you all have seen the, the new truck that they purchased with the SRO for Officer Ray, but even better is the one at Bates. Have you seen the one at Bates?
No.
It's got a bulldog on, on the hood and on the side.
All right.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's pretty neat. They just did that one recently. So they're really owning that by placing their SROs on here and then personalizing their vehicles that are even in front of our building.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
So do you need us to pass the name of this today?
I don't, I'm not sure what the legit.
So we're, we've talked with Ms. Wilson about it and she's going to crunch a few more numbers. We're going to have a meeting a little bit later. So if you all would like to move forward, we can have it on next week's agenda under staffing and for approval because there'll be one or two other things in there.
Do we have money?
Yeah, that's what we're double, double checking. Yeah.
And then we, and I don't know if that would actually mean modifying our MOU with them because I think it's number specific officer. So we'd have to modify that as well.
This is a side question just because I'm curious. Are any of the SROs persons of color?
Not here.
I don't know, I don't know who the two in the tank are. So currently, no. Yeah. But no.
Just to reflect our district a little bit, it would be nice. I know it's the easiest thing to do, but it'd be nice to think about.
Who child are Parks? And he's Volcano now. He's down at Pearl, Pearl in America.
Daleen's at high school. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's just a question. I mean, it's not available. They're not available. But it would be nice to bring some diversity. I just think, you know, with the climate of relationships with police officers, if children can get a positive interaction with police or look different.
Very important.
That would be beneficial.
But see, I mean, Mr. Parks was with us for.
Long period.
Last three years.
Yeah.
Oh, he had, he had a communication with those kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did everyone at the class walk all the time?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So safe.
Sound different.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, right. It's just a question that was popped up in my head, but.
I don't, what is a female and what is a male? Would you know how?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a greater to have.
And, and Officer Ray's, you know, he's a Dable graduate. That's, that was, that's what we, since we had a session of the program back in two thousand eleven, I believe it was, that was something also that we felt important, that's a local law enforcement they understand, but our school system as well.
Right. Do you need a vote on this?
No, we're going to wait till next week or, yeah, the next week.
Can you get them, get the numbers? Okay. Sounds good.
Well, thank you. Oh, and then you're next as well on the calendar update.
So this one is centered around, we were looking at holidays for people who are what we consider year-round employees. And Dable, that's considered two twenty-five and a half. So all employees that are under, on a hundred eighty-seven minimum day certified calendar or a hundred eighty day classified calendar get their maximum for holidays within that school calendar. Our policy currently, anybody who's above two twenty-five gets an additional three holidays. And so we designated, we really have never designated it except in the calendar process or talked about it at, at, at central offices, as I've learned. If you get to know me at all, you will know just about any question that's asked of me. If, I, I try not to just pull the rabbit out of the hat and give you some contemporary wisdom. I usually always go to policy or procedure. I mean, almost always because there's something there. I am absolutely shocked at the disparity between this, this holiday and annual leave across the district. I could not find, I picked ten, just to do some reading. Not one of them are the same. They are, there is, as, as from this end up, you get four. It doesn't matter if you, then you've got the other one that says you get your four and it's up to whatever the superintendent wants to do. And that's pretty, I mean, that's pretty broad. And then you've got some that are, that are very specific to, they even break it down to like up to an employee a hundred eighty-seven to two hundred ten days, they still fall with the four. But once they get to two ten and they go to two twenty-four, they get additional two. And then there's another two and then another two. And those employees that are state, I mean, that are two forty employees looks more like what you see from a, someone at the state. Because state normally gets ten and a half days unless it's an election year. And ours also reads that. If it's a presidential election year, we get the seven plus the one. So what I'm, what I'm recommending is, is for us to be able to do some research to make one that's a little bit clearer about this. Because what, what brought this up was June, June tenth. And so we want to, we want to honor that. It's a federal holiday. They're not honoring it at the state level. But we find a lot of value in that. So we would like to be able to move forward and looking at presenting maybe a different, more prescriptive holiday for those employees that are year-round.
Okay.
Could say it was good.
Yeah, be more uniform.
Yeah. And it, and it does get confused. You don't want to do, you never want to put Memorial Day on a, on your, on your regular school calendar as one because we usually get out beforehand. I didn't know this. I'm just telling you this information. If someone retires that year and we get out on June twentieth, but one of their holidays is Memorial Day, their retirement doesn't start live for that holiday. So that's why you always try to make that one of your year-round employees and not part of it. I think that's all I had.
Yep. Yeah. The next is just, we need to make a motion to approve the cancellation of the June nineteenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the June nineteenth meeting. We'll have a full, full board.
Okay. I have a second. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And why are we doing this?
It's June tenth and we won't have enough. And then consent agenda, did everyone, does anyone have any questions?
They can be very bold in that.
Awesome. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve, you can send agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent.
Do I have a second?
Yes. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine. How do you adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I think we need to.
Do you want a question?
I think we need to recognize I'm your doctor.
Yes.
Two stabs.
That's a book.
It's Facebook official.
Has your brain cooled down yet?
Yeah, I'm not writing anything ever.
Has your brain cooled down yet?
Oh, bless him, my child. It's Facebook official, so that makes sense.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm moving. It's adjourned.
Second motion?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Bye, y'all.